Oh, the whole.
I hope the game's on here.
And and now it'll get to sit next to me. All right, I'd like to call the Dover Slankworth meeting to order on Tuesday, May 21st at 6:30 PM. Jeanette, are we having trouble with with the the audience computer? It's not. Okay, so that nobody can see the audience, just the board at this point. So. So Eric, like when you when you're gonna present your things, could you come up? Okay, that that'd be great. And anybody else who was presenting anything, it would be great. Public comments. Hearing none, we're gonna move over to unfinished business. The town Commonwealth project update, 36-hour test results show no PFAS detected with an exclamation point.
Actually, I think everything was.
So I think the next step would probably figure out how if we need to do an RFP or if our highway department can assist. Or is there more? Oh, okay. The way you. Okay.
No, it all has to his report, all has to go to the state.
And they have to approve it.
They have to.
So should I make us something more? And I'm sure there's some engineering they're gonna make us do.
Yes.
Okay, so is that unprocessed now, Jeanette?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're one step ahead. From where we were, Sarah. Um, so does it? Does it make sense for us to begin the RFP process on what we need to build so that we can be ready when the state, assuming the state says yes, that we can be ready to get underway and get that project completed? Or is it, are there too many variables that it doesn't make sense to do that?
Um, I'm just gonna, I'm not sure. I didn't reach out to the people at the state that we sent the the report was sent to and see what they tell me.
Obviously, we're anxious to get.
Yeah.
Going if we can, but we don't want to do it wrong and then have to.
Right, right, exactly.
So that would be great to know. And I would like to officially thank Jeanette for all the work she put in on this. It was huge and it's very, very appreciated.
I think the one thing you do is you could call the well company and let them know that they're gonna have to put a well in the. But you got a little well pumped in and then run the water all over to that place. So I don't know if it's doing that. I don't know if we're digging the hole.
Well, pushing did the well.
Right.
So I I think we need to, if you could call the state, that'd be great. Thank you. Next, we're gonna continue the discussion on the childcare tax contribution. And I understand that Jeanette and Marco went to the webinar today.
Yes.
Okay, um, did you learn anything of interest?
Nothing that will influence the board. So I've really, you know. Well, you know, when when are you obligated to withhold that? It's really what the crux of it was, but in terms of how much an employer decides to withhold, how much they decide to share out with employees that you don't employ.
Board, any comments? Again, this is a 0.44% tax that we can, as a town, pay fully on our, for all of our employees. Yeah. What was not even 1%, 0.44.
Didn't Marco give us that from that last time? How much would the corporate bill? Was it like a thousand or something like that? Yeah, so 1.5 million payroll, the full 100% would be about 6,600. If the 75, 25% split, which would be 25% will be the highest that the employee could be withheld. It would represent 4,050 to 10. And I did speak to several major, major phone calls and I can tell that within the WCSU schools, all those payrolls, nine, 10 payrolls, it's 100% covered. Stratton was leaning toward 100%, Rattleboro was, uh, Wilmington was leaning toward 100%. This is the time they weren't. You know, they had made the decision that that's the way they were leaving. Brooklyn, 100% hometown, Duane, 75, 25. That's what I got.
So what was it that Scott asked? What was it that the town was on? For $6,000, you said, or?
At full 100%, 0.44%, it would be 6,000, roughly 65,000. If you absorb the total cost, you put 25% of it.
So 25, if we we could go up to 25%, so we could offset $1,500.
Approximately, correct, you could offset.
I'm gonna make a motion that we, as a town, will absorb that 25%.
Second. Discussion. Sarah. My only concern is that's how much it is for now. And we don't know what the state's gonna do. And I don't know that it's easier to ask people to start absorbing it right up front versus if there is a bump and we come up to it later on and say, okay, now we want to start sharing.
Did they enlighten you on that?
That's a good, they they said that there are no, from all the discussions that folks have had, the the tax people have had with their contacts at the legislature, there's no indication, at least in the short term, that it will be increased, but a tax is a tax is a tax, so.
Yeah. Jeanette?
Well, they also said that it's that this 44, 0.44% is is gonna be in the statute.
It's in the statute, so they have to change the statute.
The legislature would have to change the statute. To a different percentage.
Other comments? I am also concerned that it's not gonna cover the daycare requirements that are needed and that it's gonna go up. And then it's really hard to ask the employees to contribute when we were contributing everything. And it's a minor amount. I mean, it's like $1,500 over all of our employees for the whole year. I just, I'm a little concerned because we know how this state works. Everything just keeps growing and it's another thing we have to take care of. Uh, there's another cost that we hadn't considered that's coming up under economic development about preserving our social media records and the cost involved in that. And again, another unbudgeted item, so. I would be inclined to say share.
I was inclined to say that too, but the last meeting was not that way. So I don't care either way. I just wanna decide tonight, not talk about it again. So if you wanna, I have a vote on it. I'm totally agreement with Sharon, so we can have a vote down mine and then move on to the next. That's.
How much work Marco wasted to share it?
No idea. We haven't done this yet.
So you might. At that time.
But it's. Oh, from Marco?
Yeah.
I don't, it's like, for, you know.
Already doing.
I doubt I'm gonna skip lunch over this, you know?
Yeah, so I was inclined to do it, but because it's 1,500, I'd rather talking about accounting, it's just easier now. Uh, we can explore if it goes up from there again, and I get to take it away, but that's.
Oh, and I think they also mentioned that once, once you decide, you don't have to stick with, you can change every year down the road, so as you.
But then we're taking something away, potential, which is a lot harder. You know, like, oh, we can't do it anymore. Well, we don't think we should do it anymore. All right. So are we ready to vote?
I'll show me a motion for 100%. There was no second.
Yeah.
Scott did second it, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Three to two. Okay, new business. Consider some of Meadows' requests town taking over roads, and I assume that's why. People that I don't know, this is generally, if you're locked in or in this, or in the room. And obviously Travis, you're gonna be involved in this discussion as well. Uh, so do you have something to present to us?
Uh, I'll just introduce us and introduce what we're, uh, we're asking about. So my name's Tom Stanzin. I'm a homeowner and member of the board of directors, the homeowners association, Summit Meadows.
Mr. Jeweler, um, secretary of the board.
Mark Solomon, I'm on board.
Michelle Star, and my wife, and I'm on the board, Dan Struck.
You know, so Bill Loomisall.
Yes, I have Bill Loomisall, another homeowner, that's a two-year meeting. So the, I guess, kind of the catalyst for this is at a homeowners association meeting. It's probably late last year, a homeowner who's very arithmetically adept pointed out that he had done some research and had calculated that between year 2000 and the time of that meeting, homeowners had paid between five and six million dollars in property taxes collectively for the, uh, the homes in the neighborhood. And additionally, we had spent roughly half a million dollars on maintenance of the roads within the community. And he asked a simple question, which was, do we like that? Do we think it's fair? Uh, if we lived on public roads, we wouldn't have the additional expense, uh, to maintain the roads. So we started a dialogue among the homeowners and we came to the conclusion that it might make sense to approach the select board and ask to initiate the process for evaluating, uh, having our roads turned over to, uh, to town and then be responsible for them. And they forced me to hold the roads. That's, that's really what our request is, to initiate that process to consider the road without telling us. And obviously, we have, uh, well, conversation.
No other comments from you?
I just wanted to ask them.
Sarah? So, um, which specifically, specifically which roads are we talking about in Summit Meadows? Cause I'm looking at the map right now.
Okay, so the, the way that the neighborhood is configured, there is a loop that is considered Summit Meadows Circle.
Is that abroad?
No.
No, you're not Summit Meadows.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Summit Meadows.
Wrong place, wrong place.
Wrong place.
It's like waiting, looking at, I was looking at Deer Meadow.
Abroad Road, I think is already a town road.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, there you go. So there's Summit Meadows Circle and Summit Meadows Lane.
Exactly. The circle is a loop.
Yep.
And then the lane goes from the intersection down to the gate. And just for information purposes, uh, the, the total length of all of that is roughly 2,900.
2,900 feet.
Just over 100.
Travis, are you at all familiar with the roads in Summit Meadows?
I, I have made a couple passes through there recently.
Leisurly?
In anticipation of this, um, just to you know, get a look at things.
So I don't know if anybody has told you that we have town road standards.
Yes.
And in order to turn the roads over to the town, they, your roads will have to come up to those standards and, and before we turn, before we take over the, the roads. And I know that, uh, the people up on around Antler Loop have asked us in the past too, but they have not been willing or financially able to bring their roads up to the, to town road standards. And we have an actual document, which is town road standard.
Yes.
Okay, so we would have to evaluate um, if the roads are indeed to town road standards.
Right.
Uh, including culvert size and everything else that's involved in that surface drainage, um, and then determine yes or no, if they happen to be up to town road standards, um, before we can make that decision. And then if, if they're not, you guys, we need to figure out how to get them up to road standards before we can, before we can move forward.
And, and that's basically our expectation. We're gonna initiate that process, we're gonna have to evaluate them with the square things, with the things we know about, so we're making a informed decision.
Do you have time, Travis, to do this during this? I, I can't imagine that this is gonna be a quick situation. It's gonna take him a while to evaluate. And then if there's work that needs to be done, it'll have to be done. So, um, but he can, what, what do you think?
I, I can tell you what I, in my looking at it quick, like my evaluation of some of it is, you know, there's easily in excess of $20,000 worth of just culvert pipe along. That replacing all the pipes that are there. And if it was, if it was me designing the road, there would be more because I think across the top part of the circle, they're running water extremely long way, which means adding pipes, the residents in within the circle might not like that. Um, and the ones down at the lower part of the circle where they'll run, uh, every bit of it needs ditch work. The road width needs all, all, there's a lot of vegetation, so it's grown in pretty narrow. The cul-de-sac or turnaround or whatever you would call that, now it's the end of Summit Lane. The configuration of it isn't ideal and it's not nearly big enough for us to turn around it. There would have to be some definite serious changes to some of that.
Yes.
Can you clarify, when you say that, like, right now, we have primarily open coves unless it goes under the roadway.
That, that driveway coves were not included in that, but just about every driveway cove up there. There might have been a, a few of them I saw that were plastic, but all of those old steel pipes that are three quarters tall. I would change all of them just because when you, when you redesign it, you're gonna want things to flow optimum. And if you, like, if you pave it or say down the road, the town decides to pave it, you don't have any issues. Your waters drainage will work as it should. The other thing I had.
I'm sorry, I actually wanted to make sure I'm getting the both. So, but your, the cove assessment, you're talking the, the pipes.
Part of the main part of the road.
Those.
All of them are steel and they all need to be plastic, you know, 18 inches in diameter.
So maybe
Yeah.
A good thing would be for one or two of the, the people in the association to schedule an appointment with you and you can go on a site visit together.
Well, I think, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just wanted to tell you about, you know, what I, things that I saw and I the other thing that concerns me is the obstacles of the power boxes and the telephone boxes.
Okay.
It looks to me like it's all underground up there. And those are expensive to replace if you didn't have a snowplow or a wing or anything like that.
And do they look like that?
And that poses another issue when you're trying to dig in and replacing all those pipes and tiding. All that, all that stuff.
Would they be in the, the town right away as well, those, those boxes?
They're, yes, they would be in the town. Some of the boxes on the, on the circle.
So they would have to potentially be moved?
Or marked or some put around them or something, or they have to be protected, you know, we want some.
Sure.
So the other suggestion to is obviously Travis can go block with you, but the next thing you really need to do is get an excavating company that can give you a better info. I mean, Travis can, you already know, you could call an excavating company, you already need to replace all the hole underneath all your roads.
Do you have a copy of this? The town hierarchy? Okay, thank you. So yeah, I mean, just a, 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 he can point out.
We'll walk through to get a sense.
And then.
One advanced and get more detail.
Yeah, then you can, you know, then you can, uh, reach out to a contractor and say, hey, this is what we're thinking, this is what we should look into and, you know, they'll be able to give you a price, I'm sure.
Okay.
That, that sounds okay with you, Travis, when you do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
If I could ask a question. So our research has shown that the, the town maintains approximately 80 roads in town. Do they all meet the same criteria?
Travis?
Yes and no. Someone who have been grandfathered, it's not that they were taken over, it's that they've been here since they did days, you know, since the town was started, so.
But that generally is our, our threshold for.
That's the threshold that was put in place by the select board that, that, you know.
1972 to begin with.
There's a reason that they did this. You know, they didn't want everybody coming forth and, you know, I'm not saying it's just to deter you, but that.
And there are, are certain
Yes.
developments that have done just that. They've brought their roads up to standard and we have taken them on.
Right.
So it's, it's that this, this tends to make it more of a level playing field in terms of that for taking on new roads.
I believe the upper part of Colonial Ridge and, and, uh, Snow Beat over some of the last, it would be taken over. I don't know the dates, but to, if that's what you're asking around and figuring out, those were the last two that were done. I saw some of the estimates from at least the Colonial Ridge on it was.
Dan?
Were we the homes built on Summit Meadows?
When did they go? I think mostly mid 80s now.
So was that.
So the other thing too is we would have to have a legal, make sure it's legal, that you guys all voted on it. So I assume this is something you can do with a percentage of, or do you have to have 100% of all your owners say yes to this? It's a combination of things too. We have to make sure you legally. So you've got some things to do and we appreciate you coming. I mean, um, it's, it's, it's not, I don't say it's up till now, it's expensive, but it can, as you guys know, save you some money on the long term.
Yeah.
The road in better shape. It's not something we're set against. If you are willing to do the criteria like we just spoke about, um, we'll come back and you wouldn't have to spend money on it until we kind of said, yes, this is, you know, we should give you a verbal agreement. If you took all these steps and you did whatever, you know, that as long as Travis brought up here, to obviously want to be overseeing it, make sure it's done properly. Cause once it's done, we take it over. So we don't want a problem.
And then again, that was our idea of what I bring up, say, initiate the process of evaluating.
And I, I was on the board when Antler in that area up around, um, the top of Dover Hill wanted this to happen. And they looked into it and the cost was prohibitive to, to, to take care of it. So that's why I'm, I'm aware that there are associations that will go for it and other ones that are, there's some owners, because you're gonna have to get everybody to buck up, right? Yeah. So. All right.
College or questions with us?
No, so, um, uh, reach out to Travis and you guys can try to schedule something.
Okay. Or you can have me, and I will shut up.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Ah.
So we're not leaving us, I just, I just.
We're used to it. We came for our party. These other, others are all regulars.
Not more charity, we're gonna set up another rule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna consider the Green Mountain Adventure Racing Association request to use the Phil Bartlett Town Forest Recreation Area for the weekend of August 17. And Andy's here. Hi, hi, Andy.
How are you folks? So, uh, Tom Martin is here, uh, on Zoom. He's with the Green Mountain Adventure Race Association. They approached the Conservation Commission, uh, looking to run a leg of their event this summer, 24-hour adventure race in the town forest. And, uh, we met, you have our minutes, um, you have the narrative that we considered, uh, Tom was present at our meeting. Um, so was Ben Joyce, the lieutenant for the Westover Fire Department Search and Rescue Team. Uh, we had, uh, looped in John Abel and Drew Hazelton. And, uh, we, uh, decided to recommend that you folks approve this. Sounds like an awesome event. They're gonna be, uh, staying up at Mount Snow and doing, um, what sounds like an amazing adventure race. These, these folks are, uh, are endurance athletes. Um, it's, uh, quite the event and, um, I, we as the Conservation Commission figured, since this sort of event isn't specifically mentioned in the, uh, Dover Town Forest Plan and because there is some risk involved, um, that it should be you folks who give final approval. So here we are.
And, uh, everybody was given copies of the Conservation Committee, Commission's meeting and also Tom's, uh, recap of some meeting as well. Are there any questions? Concerns? Sarah?
There, okay.
So you would add the town as additional insured?
Exactly. Yep, we'll have a, a comprehensive insurance policy that we get through the United States Adventure Racing Association and we can add the town as an additional insured. Yep.
Jim?
I'm curious, how many participants?
Uh, right now, about a hu- 120. Um, not all of them would end up in the Dover Town Forest. This would basically be one of the final sections that probably only the fastest of teams would get to. So we'd expect probably closer to 60 or so people would actually end up in the Dover Town Forest. Uh, in teams.
Maybe just to give us a couple of the highlights for those who haven't been able, haven't seen the, your recap. Um, like that you're, a minimum of two people go together, so they're not individuals.
Sure. Um, so exactly, we will have teams of two to four people. There's no solos out there. Um, all teams will have GPS trackers, so we can follow all the teams and know exactly where they are. We will have, yeah, a, um, EMT or, uh, basically a wilderness EMT stationed up at the Dover Town Forest there. Trying to think of other things I may have mentioned. It'll be a three to four hour is what we're trying to aim for trekking leg. It'll be just on foot. Uh, nobody will be biking. They'll have map and compass and, uh, carry a cell phone in the event of emergency. They can pull that out and use it. I think that was pretty much the highlights.
Are used to doing this type of event, correct? They're, they're, they're endurance athletes.
Yeah, exactly. So one of the things, you know, being that kind of final section of the race that only the fastest teams will get to, I can guarantee you that anybody that reaches this section is a, a very familiar with adventure racing. Um, you know, like you said, endurance athlete. Um, if something happened, you know, we have a really strong track record. We actually, we've been hosting events for probably almost 20 years at this point. Um, I've been on the board for maybe six of those. Um, but you know, we've never had to do an extraction, you know, we, we scout the area ahead of time. We don't, you know, put people like on cliffs and things. Um, and, and so, you know, we've never had to do an extraction and, but if, if something did happen, um, like you said, they're endurance athletes, they're not expecting immediate response. Um, and, and they're definitely able to take care of themselves. Everybody carries, uh, you know, we have like a mandatory gear list for all the teams. Um, we include like safety items. So, you know, obviously like a med kit with minimal, uh, like we have a, a list of minimum things that the, the med kit must include. And then, you know, there's like, uh, you know, raincoat, rain pants, those kind of things. So even though they were in the middle of the summer, if there was like a, a temperature issue, they'd be able to take care of themselves for a period of time, that kind of thing.
Other questions? Yes, Gus, it does, uh, is this, it starts like in the morning then?
It will start Saturday, um, probably around nine or 10 o'clock in the morning. And then they would be getting to this section, um, in the morning of Sunday.
Police department, any concerns? None? Any other comments?
They can't either. Talk to search and rescue, so they're aware of it.
They were, they were. Yeah.
Yeah, they were at the the previous meeting and and definitely as we kind of finalize the course. Um, we would show them a full map, see if they have any concerns and and make sure they're fully looped in with what we're doing.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the use of the Dover Town Forest for the. Uh, Green Mountain Adventure Racing Association request for the weekend of August seventeen.
Any other comments?
Thank you for choosing this area.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us.
Can uh, well, would other people be allowed to use the area on that Sunday morning?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep.
Very good. Any other questions? All in favor? Great.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you Conservation Commission.
Thank you folks. Appreciate that. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks for coming, Tracy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, we're moving on to the police. Consider special traffic regulation for the Blueberry Parade. And this is something we normally have to do. Um, it basically. Says we're gonna run a parade down Route one hundred for a certain period of time on from eleven AM. On the twenty-seventh of July. And this is something the whole board signs.
So we make a motion that the board sign the special traffic regulation for the Blueberry Parade being held on July twenty-seventh on Route one hundred.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor? All right. Update on the July six five K run.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let you know that Chief Warner and I met with Michael Best that's been on. We settled on the original route that goes through Mountain Park Plaza. So it's gonna be less of a shutdown. Route one hundred and less of a shutdown on our resources. Chief Warner was giving permission from everybody in the plaza. That's all set. So we're good to go through that. Um, the question I have for you guys, what you just signed for the Blueberry Parade is. Necessary to get the permit from the state for the Blueberry Parade. The five K has already been permitted.
By the state.
By the state. So is that piece of paper something you guys also want to sign for this five K? Giving us permission to reroute and direct traffic. It's not necessary for us. It's not necessary for the permit. It's already done. I just didn't know if there's something you guys need to be involved in.
And the permit that they received was going through Mountain Park, correct?
Right, so it's all set on there and I don't need it. State doesn't need it.
So so they're not going up Route one hundred like they.
They're still going up Route one hundred, but only from Mountain Park Plaza by the post office.
Yeah.
To the firehouse and back. There the original proposal to the board was to come down Country Club and across seven eleven.
Because now Dots isn't open either, which is where all the parking and and traffic was gonna be at that time of day, correct? So.
So Mountain Park Plaza will be open to the post office and anybody that needs to kind of go, we'll we'll just be directing traffic, but it can be a lot easier than. Two hundred system, not minimal, or to seven eleven and a mountain.
I think I'm good with.
Yeah.
The permit as granted by the state.
It's all down on there and the board.
So how how many people are you gonna use for resources?
The entire police department will be there. Um, and and the fire department, which is doing that part.
Not, but how much is the bill gonna be?
I don't know for sure. We discussed it in roundabout terms. But there's a minimum call out for this type of thing since outside.
So it's gonna be like a minimum of four hours.
Three, I think it's four hours now, yes.
Four hours.
But I'm gonna have two officers on duty with the expectation that they'll break the way it does the case.
Alright, the other the other thing too is we have not looked at outside employment. And we've kept the rate, we've gone up quite a bit, so I'd like you to look at the outside employment. Because they're in overtime and make sure, I mean, we can't do anything now, but come back. To us if we're not covering that.
I believe that was updated at the last round of salary talks.
I I believe so as well. Okay.
This like, I would like an update on the actual cost. But I I'd like to have it come to the board so we see the numbers. It's just so I'm aware of what.
Well, and now there's there's gonna be costs to the fire department as well.
Just cause it's not that I don't wanna, you know, it's 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 costly for an event, so just wanna make sure we're.
Do you want that from the fire department as well, Joe? Cause they're gonna be billing for their time as well. It won't be overtime, but they're, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want the overall.
Well, the overall, you know, make sure that we're covering costs, because the fire department doesn't have. A setup for, we have, we never got anything from Rich, but he's gonna charge for the.
Well, then it would be there, there's like there.
Regular rate or, because obviously there's other expenses. So I'm not trying, yeah, I'm not trying to get away from the event. I just, you know, it's taking up a lot of resources, you know, if it was five thousand people. You know, as opposed to a hundred and fifty, it's just the amount of people involved. The cost.
Well, those those costs should be built to the race.
Right, but.
And and we're also putting money into the race.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Right.
Putting money in, it's a fundraiser and we're sponsoring it, so it's. That's why I'd like to know, like, how did it actually all pan?
So who's gonna contact Rich and tell him we're gonna want to, okay, Sarah? Okay, thank you. All right. Update on the Tahoe Cruiser and approved ARPA funding for outfitting. And yes, we read the the, we're all aware.
So the uh, I don't know if you've seen anybody talking about, it's all ready to get accept for. The radio, which is still, which is just waiting. It was already in October. We're hoping that it. So now it's like, um, it's only fully up and on and that. That bill will also be going towards the ARPA funds.
So we did vote in a meeting uh just for for the money, just so everybody else is aware, uh for thirty thousand, up to thirty thousand.
Correct.
Uh, is that it on the?
Yeah, slightly noted itself and that I wasn't fully aware that everyone knew that we found that uh that thirty thousand had been.
So that brings our ARPA money down into the one thirty range that we have available. I have no idea how much it's gonna cost to get that water up to the town hall and the library and the daycare. Replacement of exterior doors at the police department.
So we ordered one of the three doors that we need, um, because it's causing issues now. Um, the deal is next week, I believe, and they're gonna be putting that in for us. Um, there was six thousand in capital for these three doors.
Mm-hmm.
And the first one costs less than nine hundred. So it's gonna be something more than less than what.
Who's gonna install it? Can Dave do that?
Steve Japan.
Yep.
Okay.
And a helper.
And a helper.
Yep.
Great. Great.
So with that in mind, and the fact that. I didn't really say it all yet, but the thirty thousand that was approved for outfitting the Tahoe. It's going to be closer to twenty-seven, so there's three thousand. We're we're about three thousand hundred on that, which is a pound, okay, I said originally, and you guys said it was to cap it thirty to sixty. Um, the. Police Department for years has had security cameras. Discuss that. And for years, there's been issues with them. They've been. Pieced together since Chief Edwards was there doing that. Most of them don't work anymore and none of them record anymore. Um, and we can't make them anymore because it's different types of wires that don't talk to each other anymore and don't talk to the newer devices that will need to record it. So we think it's important to have that. We use it not only as a security, but also as an investigation tool sometimes. We've been looking at things and for well under two thousand dollars, we can get twelve cameras to sixteen cameras. All on HDR that will record everything that's going on so that we can go back and get it if and when we need it. Um, so I'm wondering what the board's thoughts are on using either some of that leftover ARPA money. And or the capital money that was earmarked for the doors, because we're gonna be well under that six thousand.
Sarah, I like Plan B.
My next question.
Use capital money, yes.
My next question, is it something we need to do?
I believe so, yes.
So there's there's not an issue there. You're just trying to figure out where the money's gonna come from. So you have money in your budget or we have in our.
Yes, so either the capital or the ARPA, I would like to use one of the. The capital makes sense to me, it's the difference of the building. Texas area of that building.
We need this.
Brad.
Um, Dave has come to me about this issue this as well and. You know, he he's pieced together these these older cameras and, you know, lived on a line as long as we can, we can. And I feel you should do that.
Okay, thanks for the vote.
Joe, it's a twelve hundred dollars. Right?
It 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 depends on what we settle. I remember we looked at things anywhere two thousand to two thousand would be the max.
So it's nothing we need to vote on. I'd say take it care of it. We have money in our fund.
I I think we should approve the the expenditure. Um, I think.
I make a motion, we approve the twelve hundred dollars for the cameras, either out of ARPA fund or uh capital.
Thank you. I amend the motion to say we approve up to two thousand dollars.
Perfect.
Fine.
I.
We're coming from the capital budget.
Double second.
Second, second. Okay, so now we have. An amended motion. I guess we need to vote on, we want to, you should know, you're.
You have to vote to approve the amendment.
Okay. Do we approve the amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Nothing?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Um, that is now the main amendment, that is now the motion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. But you didn't come up and sit in the chair, and that was my bad. Economic Development, the library story walk.
We're gonna let. Shannon, take that one?
Hi. Um, so the library would like to do the story walk again this year. Um, they would do it for the month of July again with the same equipment they used last year. Um, but they would like to expand the space between um each display a little more than. Has been in the last year. Um, and there'll also be a published book this time and then we'll switch out to art. Um, from students in the summer program. Um, and I think in the future, they're looking to change those displays, but they're going to use what they have for this year.
I guess next.
Don't sound like you're so like ready, yeah. All in favor, someone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the library story walk as described.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? We have the Dover sign improvement.
Yes. Um, so EL Dobbin Construction, which is just south of where you are sitting. Um, would like to put a sign out front. They are asking for um the project cost of seventeen oh five, so eight. Hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, they included their approved permit from zoning, um, all of the scale drawings and everything. And we recommend that you approve this.
Make a motion that we approve the sign application for EL Dobbin Construction.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor? Or is still maintenance bids? I'm betting this goes back to Eric.
It does. We received two bids, uh, one of them higher than the other. However, um, I would like to make the recommendation that we move forward to Sinuosity as our maintenance provider on the property. Uh, concerns about um experience and um.
Proximity.
Proximity and size of team with our with our second bidder. Um, so that would be maintenance through this year with a with a one-year review in the contract. Um, for a total of three years. Will be assessed, but we do have the ability to review. We will have the ability to review the contract at the end of year one to make sure that we're.
What was the question for us?
It was six thousand dollars a year.
On how much amount of money?
Nineteen thousand is the annual cost proposed by ninety thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars by Sinuosity. And then the other company, which is, how do you say this?
Gilmet.
Gilmet, thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty. And they are out of Burlington. If I'm reading this correctly.
Yes, and.
A lot of, and here's where the people are from Sinuosity.
So it's like thirty percent difference?
It is, again, major concerns about availability of the lower bidder. Whereas the proposed workers in the higher bid are local. I mean, if we have a tree come down on the property, which is part of the maintenance, and we have to call someone in Burlington to come and take care of it.
So you're saying if we have a tree come down on the property, they come down and do that as an extra charge?
No, that's what.
Well, so that's included in there, twenty thousand, and it wasn't included in the thirteen thousand?
It's not clear.
Yeah, the thirteen.
So I didn't look at the bids, I'm just.
Okay.
I'm doubles advocate here, you know.
Yeah.
It's a big chunk of change. So. It didn't look close enough as you had, so that's, I'm just, I'm just second guessing.
Sarah, I felt like the thirteen thousand, the Gilmet budget or. RP was less um specific, gave us less information than the than the Sinuosity.
I make a motion, we accept. The synergy.
Sinuosity.
But whatever amounts or.
Nineteen.
Nineteen thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars for the one year with a three-year possibility of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. So it won't, we we're locked into that price if we are happy with what they did.
Second.
Um, did these guys come down and lock the property?
I.
I I got the feeling that it was kind of, maybe not.
I I don't believe so.
Yeah, people we have not made a motion.
So no one ever.
I, he called uh to make, he said, I don't, I'll make it down there to drop my bid off and I'd email it to you. And I said, yes, that's fine. Uh, a blurry photograph was sent of the bid. Um, and then he sent me a an updated scanned version shortly after. That's what what you see. And just so we're clear, uh, the Sinuosity bid would include some some cleanup from this winter that we need to report.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The money coming from the Economic Development Department.
We we have a line item in our budget for.
Okay, the Horace Hill Recreation Area sign approval.
I would like to buy this. Uh, coming from Dover Sign Shop, installed for a total. It's it's a seven foot wide by approximately three and a half foot tall. Uh, foam carved sign with a um an acrylic logo, Dover logo installed to meet sign standard. Um, the logo being acrylic will last much longer than if they just. Something not acrylic in there. There's photographs of the sign in the spot. Um, and it should be uh plenty of years out of it. So sign on the exterior kiosks, just on the interior, which are provided by our our builders and designers. So we are paying for the exterior sign.
Four thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars.
Make a motion that we that we authorize the Economic Development Department to purchase. The Horace Hill Recreational Area sign. Uh, for four thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars installed.
Sorry.
From Dover Sign Shop, from Dover Sign Shop.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have the porta potty at the park.
Proposing that we. Um, work with All Out Waste, who's the provider for the pickleball courts? To put an A D A accessible porta potty in the park. Uh, can't get a straight answer on whether or not restaurants will be open at seven eleven during our concerts, um and there's continued. Push from our friends in the public to have facilities available. Um, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars billed every twenty-eight days, um so it's basically a month, but a twenty-eight day billing cycle. Uh, and it's a month-to-month. Uh, rental of the unit, so if we have the unit there for a month and find that it's untenable, um you know, we can't. Handle it for any reason, we're not locked into a contract with them. Uh, for the season, my proposal is to place said porta potty uh behind the shed. Trying to limit as much view from Route one hundred as possible, so that it's more for the people in the park and not for people. Um, just driving by. Uh, and with the, with the vehicles that they have to service these, they would be able to. Um, back, they may have to back across the grass to, to deliver the porta potty the first time. Uh, but then their five fifty would be able to back down the trail weekly to service, includes toilet paper and, and sand. I did not put in front of you the optional hand washing station.
Is this just during the concert season? Except for the whole summer?
It was, it was for the summer, uh, we were thinking until November first. Or it seems that it will be moved before then, we would remove it before. Um, this is, this is really a trial run, I mean, this is something people have been asking us for. Yearly, if not more, every since I got here and before. Um. This is our experiment, right? We put it there, if it works, it works, if it doesn't work, we have a ground to stand on to say this is why it didn't work.
So hopefully people are respectful of it. And. We try and now we have the two on the trail too, so we'll have access to that we, we are paying for it. So we'll see how it goes.
Uh, no, I had a question, um, so who's gonna be the on-call when it's tipped over? Um, it's a mess, um, that's, that's something that we have to actually consider. Who's gonna, who's gonna be, it's Sunday morning and somebody finds it and calls somebody and, you know? And we have to deal with it. I don't know what we do.
I don't have an answer to that.
Don't?
That's, I'm not gonna say call me, but if you put it past just because of the publicness of it. Is there are four things that you could actually put pins in so you can't actually tip it over, so. Whether it's us getting those four pins, Travis, the band stake, just so that it's. Not as easy for if there is some sort of kids. To do it and it's will hopefully happen. It is a bigger unit, so the gate is a little harder to tip them, but they can be tipped.
Well, then people can just mess them up too really badly, so.
That's.
Um. Cause we're not gonna be closing them at night, right?
Uh, there's, there's really no option for that, I mean, it's short of us asking somebody to go and lock them and unlock them on a daily basis. If for any reason, you know, it was. Something happened to it that made it unusable to the public, at that point, we would probably lock the unit and make a decision about whether or not it stays where it is or goes. Um, but as far as, I mean, we can, we can stake it in, I don't see that being a huge issue, and if we don't have issues with it this year, Travis and I have talked about in subjects. Here's building, maybe a partition or something that, you know, kind of blocks it a little more from, we just don't wanna dump a bunch of money into something. Again, it seems like.
I think people would really appreciate it, I, I, it's those bad apples that just sometimes ruin it for everybody else.
Yeah.
And hopefully we won't have that.
Do they don't make time losses?
There's options, but again, it's.
Yeah.
You just see, you're gonna break it, if anything, you'd have to build a structure around it, that's much more secure.
Right.
You know, plastic, which if it goes well and we don't have any problem, maybe that's the next option so that we can, if it's. Whatever, but I think that it is something that we need. Seeing that we put out things to pick up after a dog. Somewhere for the humans. That was a big, big thing for me. So let's just do it, so I make a motion that we put the porta potty in the park.
Second.
Any discussion, anybody else wanna weigh in on the potty? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
And this is my favorite, the social media archiving.
Jeanette and I were contacted by an arm of our website, our new website provider. Our website provider sold Civic Plus, uh, another arm of Civic Plus reached out to us to discuss our options in terms of archiving or social media. In order to meet public record laws. Uh, if we post something on social media and a comment is deleted, um technically we fall out of compliance with public record. So they presented this to us, uh, I gave you guys the, the. Deck that they presented and then the, the form letter that they so graciously put my name on.
I couldn't see the price on this.
So, um, it's actually in this executive summary anywhere from twenty-nine eighty-eight to forty-seven eighty-eight um for the year, so if we. If it's something you wanted us to look further into, we can figure out exactly what it is that we would be covered for and then come back to you with the real price. We just didn't wanna invest too much time and energy if it's something that you didn't want us to do.
So.
We've required.
So there. I'm still not.
Um, so are, do we, are we aware of any other towns that are using this kind of uh archive? Of social media, it's, it sounds like it's a sub-industry now that's growing at the expense of, you know, everything, so maybe we stop social media. I don't think we should, but I mean, I'm thinking, you know, this, there are towns who don't even. Record their meetings or do any Zoom or anything because they don't want that, you know?
So the reason that this is coming about and the reason that you may not have heard of many other towns doing it is because it's, it's somewhat a recent phenomenon. That sue happy people have used this as an excuse to go after you. Much like uh happened not all that long ago when websites weren't considered A D A compliant. Um, when we got our new website, it's been upgraded to be entirely A D A compliant with screen readers and everything else. Um, and language is all of that, so, you know, up until recently, that wasn't an issue either. It's just the, the nature of our society now to sue first and ask questions later. Potentially our social media could be used ones.
But if they can't get it, how are they gonna use it against us?
Well.
So if someone say that, that, that they can come after us because we didn't save an archive for social media?
Correct, so if somebody comments on the social media, they have the ability to themselves remove their comment. And that removes us from being compliant with public record.
Uh, so, sorry.
No, just, just a thought. Can we remove comments? Like the ability for someone to comment, or would we, would even wanna go down that path? You know, like, whatever, but like, I just, just a thought, and I know that, that, that there are the students at the school. And they're talking about the websites and that is the whole thing, there's just a group of lawyers and people that are just looking for things to sue and find things to do, so.
I don't know about the ability of removing comments, but I think with the majority of what we post, I mean. It's lost dogs, it's, it's.
It's, the concert in the park was canceled today.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
You know, they, they're mostly just public service announcements and things of that nature.
But it's a kind of thing, if somebody commented on one of our posts and then removed that comment, we have then violated public meeting law by not retain, retaining. Their comment on our post.
Claire, I was just saying, remove the ability for them to come, for someone else then.
That takes away.
I'm just saying, it just.
Takes away the experience of the more.
We had to remove the comments from uh the Dirton Valley News's website, we just, we couldn't do it and it just, it became a. Yeah, and so, yeah, it's unfortunately a fairly hard thing. But I just, everything is the culture of now, here's another expense and I, I don't think that necessarily economic development should pay for the whole thing. I'm just thinking if we pay for it. No, you know what I mean, because the police department uses public, you know, uses it to find out the owner of the lost dog, you know? Yes.
So I didn't come to you to ask to spend economic development money. Present that this is some like, it, it, I happen to be the one helping with the transition of the website all the time, so that's why this fell into my lap. I pulled Jeanette in as the administrator.
Yeah, she dressed nice so that they could.
No, I'm curious, what, what does, can you do on their web, their Facebook page? Do you have that, if you have that?
Comments that are, that are.
Yeah. How come the police department doesn't have to do that?
We could probably spend more, I guess, police department and I don't too.
Well, that's, so technically, as, as a social media page of the municipality. They would be able to same stuff.
Mike?
That's what I was asking whether, cause all we use correctly is Facebook. And so I'm, so this probably included that, any social media account for the town or?
I, I think that's where our range comes from of twenty-nine hundred to forty-nine hundred dollars, um, so again, I can have more information together on this.
Can we reach out to the state? And under, understand their guidance on this and how many towns are actually taking advi, you know, taking this on? I think that that's where I would start and try to find out, V L C T should be an advocate, they should be on the front end of this, this is something's happening. And I haven't seen anything that they have posted about it.
Sarah, so is this potentially. Gonna go down the road where any town employee who has a private Facebook account is going to be. Held to the standard, like for instance, there's a, somebody in the maintenance, you know, town highway department. Who posts fairly regularly about plowing, seeing road conditions, things like that, it's a private account. But it references employment, if I were to post something about a select ward meeting, like do I start down that path?
Good V L C T.
Yeah.
If you write that down, I'll ask that question.
That's mine. Okay. Um, yeah, I think that's a place I'd like to start and what's the state's recommendations for it, because it, it does, it becomes. That, that, the whole.
I had sucking.
Cloud of what it could be and, and who's covered and who's not covered and whatever, it's, this is ridiculous, but yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you for letting us know, way to make money. Yep. And this is an arm of the company that we, that owns our, is doing our website?
Of course, of course, of course.
Oh, good, there are many of these companies doing it, they just happen to reach out. Uh, and the only other update I have is that the ordinance draft is done on the S T R, uh, and it's just, it will be reviewed. Through my in-house copy writers and then sent out to legal for.
Awesome, thank you. Now we need to go on to the board of liquor control.
Make a motion, we go to the board of liquor control?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a third-class liquor license for Mount Snow L T D D B A Sundance Lodge.
I make a motion that we approve the third-class license for Mount Snow Limited D B A Sundance Lodge.
Second. Any comments? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to come out of the board of liquor control.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Consent agenda, we have the minutes of May seventh. Um, to approve and. Everybody present, we make a motion, we approve the minutes of May seventh?
Second.
All favor? We have the warrants for May eleventh, twenty twenty-four. For six million. Nine hundred eighty-one dollars, six hundred eighty, nine, I got it, you got it.
I make a motion to approve the warrants of May eleventh, twenty twenty-four for six million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred eighty dollars and thirty points.
Second. Any concerns? Comments?
Lot of money.
If I can start most, they're at the roots of major bills, we could just say, you know. All favor?
Aye.
F Y I, we have the town plan public hearing June fourth at six fifteen P P M. Prior to the select ward meetings, our next select ward meeting starts at six fifteen. Um, then we have the select ward special meeting for employee evaluation on June seventh at eight A M at town hall. The select ward special meeting for employee evaluations on June fourteenth at eight A M at the town hall. And the Snow Lake Dam public meeting July sixth, oh, I didn't know that they set a date, July eleventh at six P M. At the town hall.
Brian, you gonna come get the.
I also forgot to mention during the public, uh. But say that the pickleball courts are gonna be, are opening up this weekend, uh.
Yeah.
Grand opening.
Yeah, I think too under public comments that Scott brought up that I did, I did go to the tourism. Uh, summit and got some interesting information. The one interesting thing coming that I got, well, a couple of things, but the interesting thing is they're having their. Vermont Association of Short-Term Rentals having their convention here at Mount Snow, the beginning of November. So they're expecting about a hundred and eighty people, it's providers or whatever, it probably would be good for. I'm not saying we should attend as a town, but I think it would be good to have some sort of representation, whatever way it may be. Seeing that they are gonna be at Mount Snow, just, we can look into possibly even. Getting a sponsorship because they did come down from our town. As the economic development. Show support against four-four, doesn't matter. That's just my public comment.
Observation, you know, we, we worked and talked at Albany yesterday, you walk in the front door, there's a giant display. So I guess we have to get pickles.
Uh, Eric, any idea when the Horse Hill opening is gonna be?
So the sign was a big part of that, I'm shooting for the middle of June.
June, middle of June.
Okay, just waiting on signage, really have to spend the maps at this point. Kiosks are going in, the. The trails are basically done at this point, there's a group of volunteers in the disc golf community who've been going out pretty regularly and making sure that everything is. So there's, um, there's already a following uh in the disc golf community, which is awesome, I believe there's a Facebook page dedicated to it already.
Well.
Um, we're just waiting on.
We have to, are, are that guy?
So we're just waiting on, um, there's T signs that show you rentals, they're just like on regular golf courses and things like that. Uh, but kiosks, believe boardwalk and all the rest of the trails are scheduled to be finished this week.
Uh, Sarah, does it make any sense to have the official grand opening on Fourth of July weekend for the maximum?
We could absolutely do that, I, the big step was getting this, I'd love to have the sign there for the old governor.
Have a soft opening.
Yeah, it was long, nobody wins.
Word thing so they know where it is.
Horse Hill in no way has been closed.
Right.
Public, they're just having an address, that's because. We have a photo shoot scheduled there for our marketing campaigns, they're, they're sending an entirely in there with. Uh, paid contractors to, to photo shoot.
Um, uh, and I apologize, I should have asked this in advance, but Jeanette, could you reach out to Green Mountain Power? And ask what's going on with the hardening of the lines in Eastover unless, has anybody seen anything, activity this spring? You know?
Uh, pretty underground.
Well, underground and a lot of it's not gonna be underground necessarily, it's gonna be, you know, yeah, yes. Where, where, you know, they were in a big hurry to do it last fall and now. I, and of course, we got Harris Road done because of that, but I think we need to uh have an update on that, so we. When people start showing up at town. And so, it's funny how they want to do it so, so quickly and then they go.
I'm not laughing, you asked a question, it's just typical.
What?
No, heard they hurry up and then they don't.
Right. I'd appreciate it, a, a member in the public asked and I neglected to contact you about that.
I'm another member of the public asking. Come another member of the public asks. Wow, us.
Um, liaison reports?
I told you.
I do not know that we need the executive session, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting. At seven forty P M.